It is.
Yes.
You're the main guy.
What did, uh, you find anything from Ben?
No, I didn't. It's nine thirty and Mr. Vice Chairman, uh, we have to you to call the meeting to order.
We all got on our.
Well, I got it at home, but I didn't bring anything.
It's not like it's terribly exciting.
Yeah.
Hope we don't. Judge Garces.
Oh, we judge Garces.
That's what they said. Sounds terribly entertaining.
It's just a ball of enthusiasm.
Jeff, you want these? You want these? Not give me about anybody.
Yep.
Thank you, Alan. I got sidetracked.
You're director now. You've got movie to shoot.
Are you ready to call them?
Yes, I am.
Calling the meeting to order. Uh, the first item is Judge Garces is here to discuss something about court reporters. Give you the court report about Judge.
As I'm sure you've all heard, and the reason I asked to come today rather than waiting until the April meeting is because this is going to affect, uh, the first of April. Unless an agreement is reached in Springfield regarding the budget, um, the court reporting will run out of money in April. I've heard two different stories and I don't know which one is accurate. First, in the budget, it is clear that they budgeted half of court reporting salaries to come from the replacement tax fund. I've heard that that fund didn't have the revenue that they anticipated, but I've also heard that when they budgeted, they forgot to include pensions and health insurance as an expense of salaries. Either way, there's a shortfall. The Fifth Judicial Circuit has, um, remaining from April first through April twenty-fourth, a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Salaries for the Fifth Judicial Circuit, which includes FICA pension, health insurance, with total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents a month. So that, uh, to stay at full funding, we would need three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents for April, May, and June. The Supreme Court has mandated, the initial thought was, I think by the chief judges, was we would just operate until the money ran out and then say, well, the money ran out. Um, the Supreme Court said, no, you have to try to, uh, continue to have court services throughout the fiscal year. There are some things that are mandated that you have a verbatim transcript for. The most common of which are the, the, the most problematic will be felonies for, um, pleas and trials, uh, and misdemeanors. So what the Fifth Judicial Circuit has decided to do is that, uh, and this is the report that Judge DeArmond gave to the chief judges, which will also be passed on to the A O Y C, the Association of Illinois Courts. And they may come back and say, work on it some more. But he basically said, there is no feasible way to make the funds available last to the end of the current budget year and still provide essential court services as outlined in the Supreme Court directive. The option of layoffs with, with the loss of insurance coverage for fifteen court services, reporters personnel, most of whom, all but one of whom, have no alternative source of insurance. There, our thought was the budget problem is of political nature. We will try our best. So we are effective April first going to furlough all court reporters, three out of every five days. That still will only get us sometime into the middle of May. Until we run out of money. Just to have some idea of the nature of what this problem creates. For example, half of the judges in the Seder in Cook County, Judge Evans, who's the chief judge in Cook County, said the absolute minimum that they need to have any kind of court services available at all are a hundred and forty-five courtrooms open every day out of four hundred and fifty or so. They don't know how they're going to do it. I don't know what their plan is. The Fourth Judicial Circuit, which is immediately south of us, um, the way they're trying to propose is they took the nine most senior or the nine highest paid court reporters out of their seventeen and just laid them off, um, which is loss of insurance. If you're close to retirement, that affects your retirement because their retirement's based upon the last four years, consecutive years and, uh, we may have some people that like to take retirement, but rather than the furloughs, because they don't want to have the effect with their salary. So what I may, and I'm saying may, and, and I know Jeff called me last week, said he had just met with a meeting where Governor Rauner was present and he indicated that they had a, uh, settlement that was coming. Judge Ryder had talked to Senator Ryder and he had met with Governor Rauner last week and said they would have a settlement in, within a week. What I have a fear of is that Speaker Madigan and President Colleton are deciding that this is a good way to, uh, show the governor who really runs the state. And that a solution won't be forthcoming. But if we don't have a solution by April first, that's what we propose on doing. And if we really run into a, if this, nothing gets changed, then I may come to you guys sometime in May and ask if it would be possible to hire a court reporter on a per diem. The per diem is two hundred and seventy dollars a day. That may be clearly cheaper to do some felony pleas than having people in the jail. We may ask to hire a court reporter on a per diem for a few days, but, and I'm also looking, although I don't know if I'll find any solutions or not, if we can use court funds to do that so it doesn't come out of you guys' pocket. Last year was the first year they did not budget all of court reporters out of the general. Nobody knows why they put half of the salary into the replacement tax fund. And nobody now will admit what they put half the salary into the replacement tax fund.
Currently, it's all funded by their salaries and everything is funded by the state.
There are some counties in the state that do have county court reporters. The Sixth Judicial Circuit, which is Champaign, the Decatur, and the small counties in between. There are a couple rural counties there that have county court reporters two days a week. And I don't know. Their proposal there is that they lay off everybody and just run the tape recorders in Champaign and Decatur and will have, um, in the smaller counties, we use the county reporters on two days a week. The problem with the tape recorder is the only counties in the Fifth Judicial Circuit that have that ability are Vermillion and Coles. But you have to have a, um, court reporter that operates a tape recording system. And we wouldn't have the money to do that. And that would create a problem for people in custody. Jeff would have to make arrangements, would have to drive to Charleston or that Vermillion, to Danville. Would have to make sure there's a courtroom available. That their expert was there to run the recorder. And would have to schedule with them on being able to do it.
So it's not something simple that a bailiff can set up and just do?
Well, you're talking about the judge, the state's attorney, the public defender.
Everybody has to be wired?
Everybody would have to go to that county to be able to do it.
So your cases are back up here, basically?
Civil cases, we're already telling people. I, I had a telephone conference call nine this morning. I told the attorneys if they wanted to have a two-day divorce before July first, that was fine, but they'd have to pay for bringing their own court reporter. Unless the state got the problem fixed. So they decided to schedule it after July one. And that's hoping we have a budget.
Yeah, how, what's your prospects of having any money after? Any?
Well, that's, what's the budget?
Well, I understand that there's rumor, I don't know how much, you, I'm sure you've got a handle since you've been over there. How much are they going to cut us as a county?
Well, that's, that's still up in the air. There's no definitive. But the first out of the box deal was they were going to cut, we, of income tax, we get eight percent of the income tax collected. And they were talking about cutting it to four percent. So seven hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand. So that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut roughly. But I guess they're off of that. But we didn't get any definitive figure on what, what money. We made some arguments and we talked about different things and, you know, out of one, one time, they talk about unfunded mandates and how they're going to attack those and deal with them like, like same day, uh, voting and all the court things that they're doing. And then they talk about doing this, which is a glorified unfunded mandate. We're going to help fund them. And there's, then they're talking about freezing property taxes, which I don't think anybody's opposed to. But there has to be some end in, in plan on how everybody's going to sew all this together.
Are, are you looking at ways, Judge, that you can cut down to one? Is that possible? Or, I'm just throwing things out here. I'm not suggesting.
One day a week?
No, one reporter for both of you. I mean, is that in the mix or, I, I, are you asking us?
That was, that was what we had prior to, in the Fifth Judicial Circuit, we've had one court reporter who is, has a pending workers comp case for five or six years. And evidently her attorney has told her that she shouldn't resign. She's not paid or anything. She's moved on and has another job. The state finally gave us permission when Sharon was hired, um, to replace that position. And Sharon works here three days a week and works in Coles County two days a week. But before Sharon was hired, we had one court reporter. I mean, that's, and we just had to schedule, I mean, if it was something that mandated a court reporter, we had to bounce back and forth and see. And sometimes we would contact Coles and ask if they had somebody extra that they could send over for.
Everybody's getting it now, though.
Is Barb strictly over here or is she?
Barb is strictly here.
Okay.
Barb's in a court though that she may decide to retire.
Hopefully it won't come to this.
What's your thoughts? Do you think it's going to?
Well, they, I read one article that said that, um, Rauner and Madigan had a deal and then Colleton was saying, but where does the money come from? I would think if you had Madigan and on your side, that it's pretty much a done deal, but evidently it wasn't, so.
That's also what I heard.
Well, don't you, they're trying to figure out a way to funnel most of the funds to Cook County. I mean, that's who's the biggest.
Well, if you stop and think, we're fortunate compared to some places in the state. If they're in custody and they demand a speedy jury trial, they have to go to trial within a hundred and twenty days. I would hate to think who Cook County may have in custody that's demanded a speedy jury trial and what the crimes are.
Majority of them are Class X and a majority of them are like ninety now.
First degree murder.
Yeah.
What we as a board can do, anything?
I'm just here to let you know and say that if, if nothing gets done, I may come back in May sometime and see if, we can't hire a court reporter on a per diem basis for one day a week or something to do some felony pleas to keep moving some stuff along.
We did meet with both judges here a couple weeks ago. And I assure you, and I'll go into a little bit more detail, they're working on other things that we can do that will alleviate some of the congestion in finances and they're helping with that. And there's a couple of resolutions that we're going to propose that will offset some of the difficulties. Obviously, we're not going to solve all the problems, but everybody's trying to work together to work these things out, work through them.
Do you have the option selecting what cases to, uh, the first, like, misadventures or felonies? No, you don't?
I mean, well, ask me again, Dan.
Like, yes, oh, like marijuana case compared to a felony case? Do you have a choice of selecting which case to see first in the court?
The state's attorney has that choice of seeing which case to see first. I mean, it, uh, you know, and the state's attorney does things, if you have somebody who is on a felony probation and they have a new felony charge, he works hard to have the petition to revoke probation heard before the new one comes along so that, uh, a lot of times if they find that the probation's being revoked, then suddenly it's, putting together a package deal becomes attractive.
So you don't have much choice on what cases to hear?
Any other questions for Judge?
Yes.
Does this mean that's going back to, you're going to start stocking them in the jail? I mean, is that, is that the essential outcome of what we're talking about?
Hopefully not. I mean, we do not have, and I mean, Ed had a, a study done back when he first started and they found that our bonds were entirely reasonable. We do not have incredibly high bonds, uh, where we're keeping people in jail. And the state's attorney is very flexible in working that to where they get out of jail. So we're not using the pre-time between arrest and trial as a punishment factor. But we may have some people that, uh, recognizance bond isn't appropriate and they can't post a thousand dollars or something that, we may have some people that are down there that.
I guess I'm looking, it's going to cost you on this end or it's going to cost you on the other end, one or the other, so that, that'd be in the case.
There's a cost to everything. One of the things Jeff's going to bring up is that, and I'm sure you guys are aware, that the state passed legislation increasing the cost of juries. We have historically paid jurors fifteen dollars a day, seven fifty for a half a day. When they reduced civil juries from twelve people to six people, they increased the cost of jurors for, from fifteen dollars a day to fifty dollars a day or twenty-five a half day. If you have a one-day jury trial where you select a jury and, and we're talking about a criminal case in, in an hour, the state presents all their evidence, the defense presents all of their evidence, it goes to the jury that day. And we had forty full people come in to pick twelve out of. That cost us three hundred and ninety dollars. If you go with even a six-person jury, which you can't have a six-person jury in a criminal case, it's to have a twelve-person jury, the minimum cost on that is for a civil case would be eleven hundred and fifty. For a criminal case, it'd be thirteen hundred dollars for one day.
One of those unfunded mandates.
And I realize fifteen dollars a day is a, is a horrible price to say to somebody, you're losing a day's worth of work and we're going to give you fifteen dollars a day. But what I do tell them is that, uh, you know, other than serving in the military, jury service is maybe one of the highest callings that as a citizen you have. I mean, you're sitting in judgment of somebody else's problem. And it seems to me like, uh, to give up some time as a citizen.
Judge, one of the, this may not be the time, but I've thought about, and I want, want to come to talk to you about it and we'll take the sheriff. Is there any way that we could get basically a courtroom at the jail where you could come down there and hear some of these things so that the sheriff doesn't have to haul twelve people up there for misdemeanor things? I mean, we could record it, we could, it, it, is there some way that we could video it to you or, just so that the sheriff doesn't have to hire people to take a slug of people up there to that courtroom? We've got, we've got the security problem, we've got the manpower problem.
We have a Fifth Judicial Circuit rule, I believe, on doing that. There are some problems primarily because we have an extremely old courthouse. Vermillion County does video early appearances in criminal cases where the person's on video in the jail. The problem we would have to have is either the defense attorney would have to be at the jail to be able to consult with their client off the record, so it couldn't be heard. Or there would have to be a secure telephone to where the defense attorney could talk from the courthouse down to the client to where the defense attorney's, what he was saying couldn't be overheard. I know Judge Andrews was looking into doing it, but the problem is where do you set it up to?
Well, this is something that, that you'd be.
Oh, we could do it, absolutely.
You, you wouldn't be too good to walk down there or to do a video, okay?
I mean, if, if, you know, if, if we had space down there to where we could just walk down there with the state's attorney and defense attorney and a, and a clerk and do it down there.
That would just say, I, do you, what's your thoughts on it?
Well, our big, big problem there right now probably would be space.
Just clean out the garage.
Be a seat in the winter, then.
We'll put you a space heater.
Or we'll, we'll be a short hair.
Yeah, right. I mean, I'm looking at the security too. I mean, you know, when you've got one deputy or two deputies and you've got twelve guys up there, it's hard to keep stuff from changing.
Well, I don't go up there all the time, but when we got a lot, you know, I've helped transport. Sometime we take twelve and three go upstairs. Nine stay downstairs. You know, people leave stuff and slide stuff. I mean, it happens.
Right, it happens.
Not to mention the, the mess we have at the jail trying to get twelve people ready and lined up and, so yeah, I mean, I said, but on our end, like I say again, it's the space probably be our biggest problem right now.
Well, maybe that's something we can work on.
I mean, that's something, yeah, something needed. Everybody, I'm open to ideas.
Work with the judges and the state's attorney and see if there can be a solution to help relieve some of the problems.
Cause that, that to me just makes common sense if you could, if, if we could arrange it.
I mean, we've got the, you know, the fiber optic, fiber optic line.
As far as hooking the video stuff up, that would be a problem.
Years ago, the capabilities are there.
Making a dedicated area for that.
Right.
Well, it wouldn't have to be fancy, I wouldn't think, but just like even the deputies room or something, it could be the courtroom and bring them in there. And that way you don't have the visitors, cause we're not obligated to let them visit somebody, you know, in the courtroom or anything, are you?
A spectator, you mean?
Yeah, they don't, they're not, they're. I mean, could you, could you, could you put away that we could, that part of it, we could put on the website and they could watch it on the website if they wanted to? I mean, push a button and it would be there. All they have to do is log on and, and they could watch the whole proceedings back and forth. I mean, there's nothing to hide, nothing to.
I mean, basically those would be initial appearances. Do you need an attorney or not?
Yes.
Setting bond and.
But what I heard from years ago was Judge Andrews wanted to physically see these people to make sure they weren't abused or hurt or anything like that and that they weren't under duress or there wasn't a deputy off the side, you know, holding a gun on them saying, "Talk," that type of thing. So, um, but I don't think, you know, I'm just looking at the practical side of it.
And the other thing that just to be aware of, I mean, that the cameras in the courtroom are coming. We haven't elected to be part of the process yet, but they're not going to go away, so. We do have a request into the A O Y C to, uh, to come out and give us some help on how it would be set up and stuff because you can't show the jury, there's certain witnesses you can't show and things like that, but.
Any other questions? Thanks, Judge. Appreciate it. We go into our next item, uh, public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes, Rob.
Just a couple of things. I didn't spend a lot of time preparing. Of course, you know about the emails and the correspondence between Hassan Gafari and Chris Spear. These are the people at the Aviator College in Fort Pierce, Florida and the subcontractor of Aircraft Services. And I just want you to know a couple of things. It was pretty easy to, to investigate and verify those statements by Jared. Couple phone calls. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them on that, in that regard, but, um, a couple of things that came to mind is that, you know, when you go to a store and you buy something and it doesn't work or it's misrepresented, you get your money back. In this case, deliberate lies and the deliberate deception, specifically a five-year timeframe and you claim to be a working, great aviation college. If you, if you do consider a remedy, Mr. Griffin, I think you are, I hope you are. I think you also might want to consider that the county is short on funds. He's deceived the county. He has deliberately lied and perhaps the county might consider a request that he return some of those funds. I think that would be reasonable. I heard the judge just a moment ago visit about his funds and those issues. It's my understanding today, the airport, gross dollars spent on the airport is between one hundred and two hundred thousand dollars a year and there are some revenues that offset that, but Jeff could tell me how that works. But, uh, and I guess the last thing is the airport really does need a credit card reader. That's something that would be beneficial to everybody and a great thing to do, not particularly expensive. And it would be a step in the right direction. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Many reports. Andy, you have anything?
I've been working with Bob up at the courthouse a little bit. A couple of things that, I've looked at as far as, first thing on my list is there's the window balances in the, in the windows. You remember that day we were up there? Okay, that was one thing that just about every person in every office complained about. The windows, couldn't raise the windows. So I looked in, I found window balances. They run basically ten bucks, ten oh two each for one size, eleven oh five each for the other size. Two of the window, you're, you're spending about twenty-two, twenty oh four for one window, twenty-two-ten for the other sized window. And I asked Bob how many he already needed. Most of, the majority of them need replaced or some of the windows that are behind file cabinets and things. But, uh, basically, we thought we might see if we could fix a dozen windows to start with. That's about five hundred. Shipping on these parts and everything, about five hundred fifty bucks to fix a dozen windows. So they can open them and they'll stay open and they don't have.
So the problem is they open them up, but they won't stay up?
They can't, they can't get, I mean, they're heavy. You can't hardly.
I'm not kidding you. I know it's getting weaker and weaker all the time.
All, most of them are wind sec. I mean, there are others, but they, you know, I can't get the others out.
If they're all like that.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't want it to fall down on you, right?
It wouldn't come down either. I mean, I couldn't hardly get it.
You can't get it.
I couldn't get that thing up.
I mean, it's just a, it's a spring and, and a pulley system that holds them up and brings them down.
See, I thought it had like weights on the other end. This is springs and pulleys, and so I don't, or you're just pushing directly against the spring, it will not move.
But they're broke off, so you're just, it's just the weight of the window, and they're heavy.
And the ones that you can get up will drop right back down.
Right.
So that's why I use a tuba for.
I can see why, cause if, if that's the way the window is trying to push up, those things are heavy.
Whatever works, you can buy a two dollar tuba for and fix seven layers.
A little black paint matches the way.
Anyway, that was one of the, that was one thing that really every office complained about.
And would a tuba two work as well?
Yeah, it'd be a dollar.
Just to find out if these things were the correct ones, I, I took pictures and worked with this company. We, I ordered four of them, just, I made sure they worked first, Bob put them in, he said they worked better than the old ones. And the system's a little bit different inside of them, and he said they worked great. So I thought we'd start with maybe a dozen of them, put them in the windows, so that's one thing. All right, the, on the, the vent at the courthouse, I've been, I've been working with, um, Harris Refrigeration. The bottom of it's rusted out, and that thing snakes its way all the way up through the courthouse. I asked him if it's possible to get a power vent for that. And he's, as far, they've, Wild McLean is the company that makes that boiler. And they called their representative from there and they said, yes, they think that, I'm not positive yet, but they think that it's possible to do a power vent right outside of one of the, one of the windows down in the basement. So you can do away, you can do away with all that going up through there. When they initially put that in, of course, that wasn't an option, they didn't have power vents there. So that's what I, I asked him, I asked about a power vent, and he said, I don't know, but he called and then got back with me. He said, they talk like that is an option that's available, so you could do away with that. That present flew on top, the roof leaks, like I said, they got buckets all around the thing upstairs. But you could get, you could patch that hole, get rid of that, do away with that whole flue system if they could power vent it. I'm still waiting on a definitive, but it looks like about a ninety percent chance that they think that's a possibility.
Did you get an idea of the cost, don't you, Andy?
A lot less than trying to repair what, what you've got to fix, that whole vent, flue needs to be fixed. First of all, it's about twice as big as it needs to be for, for that size of furnace. So you'd have to put a whole nother flue system up through there, this would be, and this would be quite a bit cheaper. And I asked him, I hate to quote any figures he told me, it's just so preliminary as far as exactly what would be required. I think it a lot less than what it costs putting the flue up through there. So hopefully I'll know more by the next time, I've been working on that for quite a while, getting it nailed down. Another thing, the roof, and I, I sent an email, I don't know if anybody, you, you got it? But it's basically, be a good business to begin, cause of all the people I've contacted, I've only had two I can get back with. But the one that did get back with me was one that Arnie Johnson had recommended. Midland Engineering out of South Bend, Indiana. He said that he could come do an estimate, but he wanted me to know that, basically, it's a fifteen hundred dollars for an estimate. He said, could you, I can't, he said, I can't give you an estimate unless I can really get up there and look at it, that requires a lift.
And they'll take care of the lift.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Plus the lift. Probably.
I don't, I'm not, you know, that, he said not, an estimate not takes, see, fifteen hundred dollars. I don't, but he said they wouldn't need a lift, I guess I said the lift would be included, there's a possibility that it might not.
What would that be, three hundred fifty bucks?
We used to run for pain.
What's that? For a lift?
I mean, if it just.
He said, you either need an eighty foot lift or a hundred and twenty foot lift, because there's a big price difference between the two of them. And that would be.
Which would make me think that this fifteen hundred doesn't.
Doesn't include the lift.
Either one of them would give me a heart attack.
Don't walk up and just look out and think, you want to be up there?
More than twenty feet up and down.
So even though, even if it's another seven hundred on top of that, before we get anything done, we're gonna have to spend twenty five hundred, I mean, let's say, twenty five hundred dollars to figure out what the deal is?
I mean, there's, if you go out there and look out, there's metal, I don't know what the condition of the metal's in. And that's one reason I tried to figure out what to do with the flue first, cause when they come, I wanted to figure either fixing that, where that chimney is, or going over and getting rid of that chimney when they come up. It'd be really nice if you could get rid of it, cause that's, I mean, anytime you got a hole through a roof, you got leakage, potential for leakage.
His price is fifteen hundred to do the estimate, what was the other companies', wasn't it eight or nine thousand?
It was eighty five hundred to fix, and basically, when you look through that estimate, a lot of it was examine, or examination, like, look to see what, where the, you know, where, where there are leaks coming through the roof. Basically, that, that estimate for eighty nine hundred, I think. Really, the, the concrete things that I saw, that it said they would do was patch any valleys or places that had, that needed patched, and replace forty to fifty shingles. But the rest of it pretty much was inspection, if you, if you read through that estimate. So basically, you're getting forty, fifty shingles and some valleys patched for eighty seven hundred, and this guy's gonna charge this, but he's gonna tell you exactly what needs to be done to that roof. So, I think, I personally think it's worth spending money, cause I'll be honest with you, when I went up to the one guy, you know, we, we got up into the, the lower bell tower, took some pictures, which you really can't see a lot. We got down on the street, took some pictures, which you really can't see a lot. It's just impossible to see what you need to see on that roof, just because of the design of it. So.
So what's the building committee's recommendation?
I think.
One with Andy.
How's your opinion?
Mister other building committee?
Andy!
So you're thinking the.
If it was mine, I'd spend the money. I don't know what it is. It's a really complicated.
As I took it, on the twenty five hundred roughly, I mean, that's the fifteen hundred plus, even if it's a thousand dollars and we have to pay for it.
To know exactly what the.
To know exactly.
If this is, if this guy, if this is Arnie Johnson that we trusted.
Yes.
If it's other thing that recommended.
I feel much more comfortable with this guy talking to him on the phone than I did the guy that came and looked at it and gave us the other estimate. I don't know, I don't know what I'm getting for eighty nine hundred dollars on the other estimate, other than forty to fifty shingles and patch some places. The rest of it is inspection and they will, and they'll add on, depending on how, what extent we want to go to fix some of these other things.
I would say we need to contact that.
Midland Engineering?
Get them down here and get them to inspect it and just know what we gotta do, how we can proceed.
And there's def, there's definite problems, I guess at this point, I feel like you can stage a little bit of it. I just, I'll know more when, when he comes down and tells us what we can.
Get ahold of him and put him down here.
That's what.
If everybody agrees with that.
I think everybody got the thing from Mark Killian, or it was when Arnie Johnson came down about, there's some headers underneath some roof racks that need replaced. I got ahold of Mark Sullivan, we went up and looked at it, it's funny, some of those have been replaced. In fact, all of them have been replaced over the years, cause if you get in, you can see where they've taken the mortar, they actually took the bricks out, cut the bricks out, put new ones in and remortared them in there to look at, so most of them have been replaced. But there are a couple of them that have had some water damage and need replaced again. Mark said he could get up, he's got, in a couple of weeks, I don't look for it to be, it would be lucky if it's a thousand dollars to have him fix all, basically, take the old ones out and put some new ones in, and you take some stainless hiltie fasteners, epoxy them into the brick and.
So he pretty well understood the way Arnie and Mark said they needed to be. I mean, that makes, that makes sense to him too? Okay.
So.
That's what I was wondering, cause I was looking at it like, okay.
And I understand, I know what hiltie fasteners are, just a stainless fasteners, you, you hammer drill into the brick, and then you blow out, put epoxy in it, push these in and they're epoxy'd into the brick to hold them in place. So Mark felt pretty confident that he could do it, a couple of weeks is, he said he ought to be able to get to it in a couple of weeks. So, there was a piece of loose flashing up there on the bell tower too, the day we were doing it, it was pretty windy. And you could see it flop, and I told him to fix that also. Not minimal, he, he basically said to get up and put some, some type of adhesive and then tack it down where it wouldn't blow. It's on the, be on the west side, if you, if you look up there, you can actually see, it's lifted up just a little bit. And that's part of the new bell tower, I don't want anything to happen to that. I also told him to take a look at the roof at the treasurer's office. Remember when we were in there, it basically leaks all up, where that roof comes up along the side, it, it, basically, it's a smaller, the treasurer's office is a smaller building next to the, what is that? Anyway, the, H and R block now, isn't it?
Well, Benjamin's is right.
Benjamin's is next to it, it's H and R block right, I thought it was Benjamin's too, but when you look at it, it's H and R block in there.
And then Benjamin's, yeah.
I don't know whether it's where that roof transitions, or there's a, there's a termination strip, when they put a rubber roof on, and you, you screw this termination strip, then you park, or walk along the top of it. I don't know where it's leaking, whether it's leaking in this bend or on the top, but somebody's gotta look at it. We're gonna, it's gonna cost you a lot more than what it costs to have it fixed. So Mark's gonna look at it, he'll get back with me on that. All four heaters in your jail are gone, the space heaters?
I think we got one on each floor.
One on each floor, okay, I didn't know whether, I thought you.
But there, there are plenty.
There are plenty, okay. I had some, yeah, I came up to Bob when we were at the courthouse, thanked him for fixing the jail.
The top one, all it needed was a lip, and one on the, in the bullpen, it needed a new valve. So we fixed one, like I say, they'll run you out of there, so.
Okay, that, two of them, two of them's enough.
Yeah, one on each floor.
Right, that's good. The USDA grant, I talked to, Rob keeps, Howard is, is basically working on it for us, with those two, with Kelly and Kevin from the.
Kevin, Kevin Kelly?
Yeah.
Coles County?
Coles County. And he, I talked to Bob, or not Bob, yeah, or Robert, and he said that they're, they're working on it. And it's in process right now, when it gets, when they gets finished with it, have you talked to any other?
I called, talked to one of them Friday.
Okay.
And he just wanted to let me know that the feasibility study for, for using that for that is pretty much out, pretty much gotta have something to. And I, he wanted me to come up with some type of estimate of what, how we wanted to use it. And I said, basically, we just want to put twenty five thousand for jail repairs. I don't know, I've gotta call him again, cause I don't know if he needs to broke down a little more like.
I, I think you're gonna need to break it down, you know, Bob, just, if you have to.
Plumbing.
Right, just, yeah, get somebody to come give you an estimate of what it costs them.
Shineroo's five, you know, something.
Something, and then you get an estimate, have them paint this, the wire brush, and paint the bullpen or something, fifteen thousand. But get any concrete figures of what they're gonna spend the money on, and repairs is one thing that's, that's acceptable with them, so, okay, good.
And he really thought, you know, if you just needed something for filler, you could put jail repair, twenty thousand cameras, five thousand here. The way he sees it, we can use that, if that's, you know, we want to take a little out and put over here, nope, but.
Okay.
But they, we need something visible at the end, you know, like, like I said, the feasibility study, he didn't believe was something he would put down as a.
Okay. And then just let everyone know, that's something we had talked about, you can apply for this grant every year, whether you get it or not, I don't know, but you can certainly apply every year. And they had talked, they had said something, and the reason, Kevin is, Kevin, whatever's Kevin's last name, he's with, he's one of the two with Coles County Regional Development, said that when they, when they built, he's in Mo, on Moultrie County's county board. And he said, when they got the, the chance to build their new jail, he goes, that was just something that came up, and they'd already had a feasibility study done, and already had a lot of things in the works, and so when that grant came available, they were in a really good position to take advantage of that grant, because they had a lot of these things already done.
To that end, we're, the chairman I know is working on a twenty five to thirty thousand dollar grant from a local agency around here for feasibility and study.
Uh, for?
For the jail.
For the jail, okay, good.
So, there's not much to say yet, but we're working on it.
Okay.
Okay, while you guys are doing this, there's.
Which we're not gonna use it for that this year, they obviously said we can't.
If we can hit that, and that'll give us a head start on some other things, okay? That's kind of the idea.
Cause I had asked the guy in Moultrie County, they actually did that, I don't know if you ever seen, have seen that facility, Jeff and I went over and looked at it.
I've seen it, but that's, that's it.
That was a six million doll, six million dollar facility, they got a five million dollar grant, and they thought.
If they had done it to start with, they'd have a bigger facility for five, five million.
But they came back and said, oh, we don't want to spend the extra million, so they, they trimmed things down, and the, in the time it took to trim it down and come back to the board, costs had escalated million dollars, and they ended up spending the same amount of money as if they just built it to begin with, so.
They got less of what they were gonna do.
They got less.
There's a moral there somewhere.
Yeah, that's right. Built that jail twenty years ago.
Well, there's all kinds of morals, but I was just thinking about the future decisions.
Did you have anything else, Andy?
I did want to say one real quick thing, Bob, farmer's market, I guess they're gonna go ahead and have it on the square. Bob had asked me, three, three things that they had asked him if it was possible to do. Number one, he wanted to know, when they set up their booths, they set them up on the sidewalk. And he said that a lot of times the people block the road, because they just, they pull up and then they're in, he goes, it's kind of a, a mess, I guess. He wanted to know if it was possible to set the, the booths up on the courthouse lawn. I don't know, I don't want to mess.
I told him I didn't have a problem with it.
I don't want them, I don't want any.
I thought it might actually cause less problem, I, I wouldn't think, once a week would.
Cause a lot of problems.
Destroy the courthouse lungs, if we. I mean, we can always start out that way, and if it don't work.
If it, I kind, that was kind of my thing to do, if you started having problems where they're working on the grass and, and hit, you know, that wall, you don't want to mess with that wall.
That's what I'm trying to figure out from their standpoint, if that's facility wise, cause right now, they're able to put it right on the road, you know, their, their whole thing is flat. And so they're able, some of them are able to pull their, almost their cart in there along the park, where does he think that's a problem with that?
I don't know, him, I think it was the, the people that were talking at night.
They, they thought they wanted to move up on.
Well, the cars, the cars pull up, and there's no place, you can't get up and down through there. You know, if you're sitting on the sidewalk, and then there's cars parked there right up, you know, how do you get to it?
They walk, they walk the sidewalk, and all this other stuff is on the north side of the square, out in the parking area.
They said on the street.
Yeah, it's right.
I thought she, I thought they said on the, on the sidewalk.
No, no, that's.
Cars pull up, and they just stop right in the street. I've never noticed a problem.
I've never seen that, I mean, I believe that, but I've never seen that. Okay.
They're not, they don't set up on the sidewalk?
That's used as a walk area.
People walk, walk the sidewalk.
It's right on the north side of the sidewalk.
You got the wall and sidewalks open and booths set in the street.
That's the one-way street also, so you don't worry about traffic going to the.
I'm trying to remember what I've seen, seen, I mean, I'm just thinking of past experiences.
Traffic control?
See, it's really not there.
Get a free turnip.
We'll work for food.
Anything else on the farmer's market?
He, and he also wanted to know, so what, are you fine with that?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Try it and see what it does, we have problems with it, back the way we used to do it, but.
Actually, it's more of vendor's request than.
Yeah, that, and that's pretty much, that was the, the biggest thing, he wanted to know if they could put a, run a hose down there and have a little place to wash. Just a couple of other little things that, between you and me, I don't, it's not a big issue. The biggest thing was whether anybody minded them putting up on the grass, and so. I don't have anything else.
Mister Brainerd?
I gave you two handouts from two different engineering firms, both on champagne. I met with both of them a couple of weeks ago, one came on a Monday, and one came on a Friday. First one is M S A, Mark Gilbert was the personal engineer I met with. He, we spent about an hour going through the building, it wasn't very thorough, so I wasn't really too impressed. He, we spent about an hour going through the building, it wasn't very thorough, so I wasn't really too impressed with him. If you look on the second page, that's just to come and six, five hundred dollars. That's just to come and spend maybe a half a day looking through the system and what we have in the building and the ventilation and so forth. Go back to first page, if you look on next to left paragraph, he figures the total to do the, uh, engineering specs is twenty to thirty-five thousand dollars. So you can talk to them about approximately forty thousand dollars from this firm just to do the specs, the engineering. So to say, I wasn't too impressed with him because he didn't seem like, he knew what he's doing, but didn't spend much time there. But the charge is six, five hundred dollars plus mileage, just come for maybe a half a day and look over the system was, was a little bit, uh...
A little high.
The other firm is Clark Deets, uh, he came on a Friday. Very thorough, if you look on the second and third page. He talked about asbestos removal, which, uh, nobody even thinks about probably, but he thought there'd be a lot of asbestos down in that boiler room area. So you have to have somebody come in and inspect that and probably set up and remove the asbestos. I don't know the, what that would cost, but I think it's probably pretty expensive. He thought, uh, instead of doing that, just, uh, shut down that part of the building, not remove the old furnace, boiler, and put the units on top of the roof. He said you divide the building in about six different areas, have six different units on a roof. Problem is, you'd have to change the electrical system to handle that, so that's gonna be another cost. Also, the ventilation, that'd be changed and you wouldn't know if the roof is gonna hold six units or not, so. His estimate, go back to first page, second paragraph, is two hundred and twenty-five thousand to three hundred and twenty-five thousand. This is not including the engineering fees and...
I don't understand, before you would reject the idea of asbestos versus no asbestos. Wouldn't we want to know before we redesign the roof system, the electrical and everything else? I don't understand why he would jump to those conclusions.
No.
And, you know, I'm not that thrilled with the way he's approaching this.
Well, I think the precaution would be if you keep the old system and remove it to replace with a different boiler, then you'd have to go through the asbestos removal.
We went through that at Crispin and it wasn't that bad.
You weren't there?
No. It was not, and we replaced both boilers and, I mean, obviously that's...
Yeah.
But, I don't know, it just seems like everybody's trying to get engineering fees and not getting much.
Yeah.
That's my point too, he may have a friend that does it.
Is McQuintuck, who's right next door there, is he, he not qualified to do that?
He's not a mechanical, he's not a mechanical engineer, he's a civil engineer. He's a structural, is he structural?
Yeah. He's structural.
Yeah, which is a very specialized, there aren't a lot of them around. But, I mean, there has to be somebody, well, one of the old timers that can go in there and take a look at that, that room and tell you what kind of problems.
I have talked to Finney and I'm gonna do that.
I talked to Finney and he's supposed to get with me, he won't charge anything, go down and look at it, so let's have somebody go down and look at it.
Right.
Right.
Uh, he said he's gonna get with me today or tomorrow and we'll go down and take a look at it.
I have got back into one of these.
How much money does the health department have?
Well, they have about two hundred thousand in CDs, the problem is, state and country funding probably, they spent two hundred thousand more than revenue for last year, so that's hard to go up.
No, I'm just asking, because they told us earlier they were fairly independent, they could take care of it.
Yeah, for a while, yeah, but...
So we're probably in a hurry of getting done.
I don't think they realize it's gonna be that.
Right, well, I don't think it should be that, that expensive.
That sounds like you're putting in new sheet metal and...
Oh, we're putting in everything.
Yeah, you know.
And I do think that probably to a degree, it's not the same configuration as it was years ago, some of it does need to be done, but I, I don't think you need to spend that.
No, I don't need it.
And, uh, Bennett said something about, he goes, well, you need to get an engineering firm because you need to get bids, well, Finney, they basically, a heating and air conditioning company, if he sells reen, he'll go take everything to reen and they'll charge you, I don't know, three to six hundred dollars
Right.
to do an estimate.
That's what he's...
So if, if we get, uh, Nicky Walker and they sell Rude or another brand and it charged, costs us that, we're still way ahead of twenty, thirty thousand dollars having two companies give us an estimate.
Yeah, the only problem is, he's gonna want his company to supply the...
And that's, that's fine.
But if it's over thirty thousand, has to be put out in bids, that's the other problem, that presents a problem.
Still, it's cheaper to spend the twelve hundred dollars with two firms, I mean, all's we're really, uh, doing is, is not specing the system as much as we want heating and air conditioning in the building, so we'll get you guys to give us their idea on that.
The only problem we're gonna have, and I know they're, well, if we go in and look at it and get it all shaped up, then we expect the business.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be an issue, you know?
That's gonna be, that's what I'm saying.
Cause you can't design it around what the bids system is, you gotta design it around the building and then wherever the chips fall, they fall.
Well, I think, tell both of them upfront, so, you know what, I wish I could just say, hey, look at it and then go do it, but given the situation that we're in, you're, we're gonna have, you're gonna have to give me what you think you could do it for and this guy's gonna have to give it to you.
Well, if you replace a boiler, it's familiar, thirty thousand, you know that, it's gotta be put out on bid.
I don't know.
And Finney says, well, if I do this and I expect to do the work or get the job, then you can't guarantee that.
I'll, I'll definitely have to explain it. I'll just tell him, you know, I, I wish I could just say do it, but that's not, in, given the situation, I can't do that.
Well, and if it's close to thirty, you know, what are you gonna do, you're gonna have to bid it because, you know, I mean, if we can save five grand by bidding it, whether it's twenty-eight thousand or thirty-two.
And, and I think, I mean, if, if you're gonna have somebody do it, you're better off telling that beforehand because that makes them sure it defends a little bit better when they give you that.
That's right, if everybody knows the ground rules to start with.
What happens in emergency, like in middle of next winter, quits?
Well, then you have it repaired, not, not redesigned.
She has a guy that repairs it, that she's really pleased with, Alex, uh, Marsh, Rose is his name, so.
What, but you said that was put in late fifties, that place built in fifty?
She said it's state of the, a guy said it's state of the art once put in, but that's been sixty years.
Terribly inefficient, right, or spent a lot of money, or probably don't need to be spent.
I haven't got back to anybody in a way.
That different boiler in the courthouse?
Ain't that...
What did that one?
That's what I was wondering if that was...
Before us when the current was, yeah, we had...
This was made by Prox cutting in, it's on First Street, I've seen the name of it, I haven't done anything, so...
Well, Finney's coming up and he, I said I want to go with him just because I want to see what's going on. He, I know about that, you can tell what asbestos, I mean, there's some that's, anyway, if we look at it, we don't know.
And now that some of the EPA rules changed on that too, and depending on how you're handling it, it can not be quite as devastating.
Yes.
Sometimes the engineering to remove it costs more than the actual removal, which is ridiculous.
Not just, we got meeting in, uh, a sub-emergency, I mean, you do.
The only thing, I guess when you're talking to me, the only thing, I know they're having trouble with the air conditioning, that's right.
That's the main problem.
I don't, I, I would not like, from their standpoint, I wouldn't want to spend money to fix something knowing I'm gonna replace something.
Right.
I'd want to get it done, especially if they're willing to pay for it.
And the problem they're having is too cold.
Is it too cold?
Yeah, that's what I understand, yeah, it's not like it's not, they're smothering in there, so.
I know, back when Ed, Sheriff, we were having some fluids or something leaking out of the roof or something, and he had an outfit from Coles County come and test it to see what it actually was and it wasn't anything to concern about. Well, I don't know whether Finney can do that, I, I'm not sure he can, he, you're gonna have to get someone like that placed for Coles County, I don't remember who it was.
They're gonna have to be certified.
Right. To see about the asbestos.
Right.
They may go ahead and do it and won't be anything there too, that's probably a kind of rip off, a lot of politics and that's...
So, so nobody liked Sycamore, wanted to look at that at all?
No, Janet says she's had a lot of trouble with Sycamore Engineering, she calls, they come over, they leave, still didn't fix the problem. She's not, didn't like it at all, just had the guy off Marsh's pretty good, name's Rose, I think.
L V R O. It's too cold?
I don't know about that, he just said it worked last year. So it's in limbo right now and still working on it, animal shelter's running great, no problems there, so.
Mike?
Um... I understand, I'm, I don't want to step on you, your deal, but I understand that they're out looking at the airport. Uh, Hanson's is out there this morning, sometime today, looking at what's been done to make sure it's gonna pass muster, that's all I know.
Who, uh, I've already talked, I talked to him on, uh, Friday, Thursday or Friday of last week.
Okay.
They had complete pictures, everything was fine.
Yeah.
And in fact, they even passed it on to Department of Arc Aeronautics, everything's fine.
Okay.
Now, there are, might as well talk, when they filled some of the cracks, there was about five or six of them that were like, you know, took five gallons and took another five gallons, you know, and they're not totally, so we may have to fill, we may have to go back with arc cubes, melt and do a little bit more, but that's not a problem according to him, because I asked him specifically, uh, they're pleased with our efforts, it's a, it's a, it's a maintenance process, we're caught up and it's not like we can, no, okay, we're caught up, we don't have to do anything.
Right.
And of course, eventually in three or four years, we're gonna have to deal with the issue anyway of that, I mean, if you've walked that, and I've walked it several times, you can see where we're gonna have to put an effort in it, put some, grind it and put a lift on it eventually, okay, so.
I understand, that's all I...
No, no, that's fine.
I didn't know what you knew, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, so.
I wasn't aware that he was gonna be here today, he didn't mention it, I didn't, what, at the airport?
Yeah, he's physically gonna stop by, I guess he's going from Springfield to Indianapolis or Indianapolis.
Well, I'm glad there's something, stopping by and looking at it to make sure it's gonna pass muster. That's fine, I think that's great.
I guess just to say he did.
That's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Ju. We'll have a whole lot to say, Carl, just have, uh, just with, with our insurance crew, they are, uh, also reviewing our employee handbook, bad luck at that in addition to stuff on negotiation, and we're in the process of trying to set up monthly meetings so that they will be here, in our county on a monthly basis, so, whatever questions.
What was the date again coming up?
Uh, well, the one in April, but we're still deciding, Jeff, we're still trying to get that squared away, I think it's tentatively the sixth. But that's, you know, where we view basically for not so much us to be there, but people who are actually doing the day-to-day workings of the county to try to get representation there, even like from county health, because it's the, we have to be careful, who's ever coming out of our payroll, everybody needs to know what the rules are, so, that's all I have.
Jeff?
Okay, well, let's just go back to the airport, uh, they worked a week ago today, Bennett did, and got the job done. And I was out there once and I kept talking to Jerry and to Tom Holt, who was actually performing on the job. And then, like I said, I talked to Barry over at, uh, Hanson's and he, uh, our airport manager shipped him a number of pictures. He was pleased with it, assured me that everything was fine, I'm glad to hear, he didn't mention to me becoming, like I said, but at any rate, we're onward and upward there, uh, they're continuing to review projects and, and go in there. We did not have an airport meeting because there wasn't a forum, uh, we are not gonna have another airport meeting until the regularly scheduled airport meeting.
On the tenth, I think it is.
That is.
Are you sure of that? I was thinking it was March the thirtieth.
Thirtieth, uh, as far as I know, I talked to the chairman of the committee and so forth, and they were not going to meet. I just, okay, so you may check before you advertise, they were supposed to, if you were...
Yeah, they sent me a revised agenda to post and I did, but I'll double check it.
Okay, the, as far as, there was no reason to have a meeting between now and, on the thirtieth and then turn around and have one April thirteenth.
Thirteenth, okay.
So it just was too close, so, they were supposed to get ahold of you a week and a half ago and let you know that that wasn't gonna happen, Augie.
I spoke with Lisa, but I, she sent me this.
Lisa wasn't who I talked to, Lisa's not the one that decides when the meetings are. Okay, I'm just, you know...
That's who I to- talked to, who sent me a new revised agenda.
Talked to Joe into, what's that, unless they're not...
Who do I communicate with?
I would talk to Joe, he's the chairman of the committee.
Right.
And that's who I talked to, and I talked to, uh, oh, Barkley, and he said, yeah, he heard that the meeting was not gonna take place, we're gonna be the thirteenth. And I saw him a couple of days ago, so, at any rate, uh, the, as far as I know, unless they change direction and haven't told me what's going on, which is entirely possible. Uh, meeting tomorrow, twenty-fourth, ten o'clock, the Cretman Building of the, uh, department heads and elected officials. Okay? Uh, it is a published, uh, meeting, like a committee meeting, I assume.
That's correct, it's been opened in public.
So there's no harm, we can't go there and make any decisions, but if you, as board member, want to go, you're certainly welcome and everything's been done appropriately so that we can attend, okay? Uh, we have gotten, uh, preliminary reports back from, uh, Bushu and, uh, I know that you received it and so was Carl. On union negotiations, we went to make sure, uh, I talked to the state's attorney, and any reports like those are protected as preliminary and it states right in the law when you're negotiating and where it's labeled correctly, that any of those reports cannot be foible because of their strategy on negotiating, okay, and we'll make sure you get one, sure, okay? But that is out and they came to the county clerk and he distributed it and then Ben will, uh, distribute it to anybody else who has an interest in seeing the reports.
Do we have a meeting set up or anything yet?
You'll have to talk to the chairman.
We haven't been really been contacted by the union on anything other than...
When does it have to be finalized?
November, November thirtieth.
Okay.
And of course, they're ten years when we've gone a year later, so.
And you could possibly this year, you know?
I anticipate this summer they'll contact us to maybe set up preliminary meeting. Like, you know, did you get a...
I got, I printed it on the computer, yeah.
I think they did have a meeting maybe a couple of weeks ago, men and women, one of the groups.
Do you have the contracts?
Yeah.
Okay.
I printed it on the computer, yeah, I've been, I looked through it, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, as per Judge Garst, uh, he has presented us a couple of resolutions, one in, in this, I'll talk to Augie and run this up the flag with the state's attorney. But currently, as he said, the jury, uh, sums are twenty-five dollars and they're going to, to fifty. And, uh, they're recommending that we set the fee for additional, uh, jurors, uh, for civil cases at two hundred and twenty-five dollars effective in June. And then we're currently one hundred dollars for jury demands. Uh, and state law allows us to go to two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And they would like the circuit clerk fees for jury demand fees to go to two hundred and ten dollars effective April first. Now, uh, this is to cover some of the fees that we're currently getting hit by and some of the direct fees that the changes in the law will cause us. Now, uh, the state's attorney is gonna be at our next meeting, next study session, to discuss with us the, uh, fees that, uh, for prisoners and the use of that for medical expenses at the hospital. At the same time, I could see him reviewing this with us.
Is he gonna want us to pass that the following meeting?
This would not have to be passed at the following meeting, this doesn't go into effect until June, but, well, no, some of it goes into effect April first.
I guess I'm confused on what that is.
These are fees that are being charged defendants for trials in, in, uh, civil cases.
Okay.
And rather than, if they're civil cases, these are not for criminal cases. Uh, for example, if they went from, they wanted to go from six to twelve jurors, no problem, but you have to pay for it, okay? I'm sorry, I probably, I know what I'm talking about sometimes, so at any rate, you'll have a chance to review these, if they don't get passed till May, so be it. But I thought since the state's attorney's gonna come out and explain some things, that, uh, Augie and I will, will arrange it so that if you have questions and he'll have a chance to review, does that make better sense now?
Okay.
I've got a copy here for Augie, too. This is what the governor asked out last Tuesday. Ben was invited to a reception in Springfield, he did not or could not go, so he asked me to go. And the governor came in and made about, we had about thirty-five, forty minutes with the governor. He basically talked for about twenty-five minutes, and then took about three or four questions. And then we met with his staff and the UCCI people that represent us at the state. And I'll try to indicate to you, basically, the governor's comments were sending around mandates. And of course, he, the audience he was talking about to, there were fifty county board members there. Which was, they, the governor was hoping for twenty to twenty-five, so just about everybody showed up that was invited. So he, he knew with his audience, he talked about local control, the state, how important it was for balancing the budget. He talked about the infrastructure, one of his main goals for this four years is to spend billions on infrastructure in the state of Illinois. He would also like to turn it over to the county levels to determine on, and he figured that this would help competitive bidding, cut bid costs by twenty-five percent. But he saw this as an opportunity for the locals to decide on right to work and prevailing wage. He would like to get that assigned at a local level so that each county could decide what they wanted to do on those issues, rather than have it mandated at the state level. Let's see, court reporter funding came up, he explained that he had a deal. And that, like the judge said, Colleton was more or less the one that slowed it up. But he promised us that before the end of the month, that the agreement would be in place, and that it wouldn't be an issue. Whether it will be or not, I don't know. Same-day voter issue came up, another unfunded mandate that's gonna hit some of the counties, well, all counties. But when you hear some of the collar counties and some of the bigger counties, it's gonna cost them millions of dollars and to enact that program. And he was going to see about getting reform on that issue. He wanted to make sure that the UCC task force met and was adequately put together so that they could bring to him issues such as unfunded mandates and some of the other issues that he's proposing, proposing, which we talked to with his staff, that it was in fact a eight percent of the income tax changing to four percent of the income tax, which would be basically cutting every county in half. The staff explained that that was off the table at this point, but not to expect it to be going forever, that there was to be some type of pain. One of them, and I didn't appreciate this much, talked about when you're threatened with death, you'll always take a little pain over the death. And I don't like that analysis at all, and I didn't think that was, I, what can you say? I think that's a hell of a way to run things. He felt the, the infrastructure would benefit education, he was, talked about spreading the pain. As far as bringing back the, the rollback in the income tax, his answer was no, no, no. And it notes so many, so many balanced budgets. He wants to make the state extremely competitive, he sees, he has an agreement on work comp. He wants to continue those agreements by balancing the budget, increasing the local governmental say over what happens in getting the state out of it. He'd like to revamp some of the state taxes. That's basically, it was obviously a political thing with him. And his aides tried to deflect all the other questions and basically saying, we'll just have to see where things wind up. So I'm not sure what we learned, but, you know, at least we, we got to listen, and we got to ask some questions and get some clarifications. There was a lot of confusion on what the state was proposing or the governor was proposing to cut. Now, these, these documents that I handed you were put out by the governor himself. And so you can see on there some of his proposals and some of his thoughts and ideas. Now, did I explain that in such a way that everybody followed me, unlike the, the juries?
You probably explained that the same way they got, explained to you up there, Jeff.
So I tried to do the best.
Made the premise like, we're gonna let local control still be more and more local control, we're just gonna take away fifty percent of your funding that you deserve.
And we brought that up, the other thing we brought up was, you know, as the state funnels stuff to us, are they going to take away half of the money? I mean, is that gonna come in, for example, since here, every other meeting, one of the questions was, are you gonna take away half of the funding for your highway engineer? And they really couldn't answer the question, they, I guess they, maybe they didn't know.
They probably hadn't thought of it yet.
But I mean, there was a lot of concerns about a lot of different things. And that's why that task force, if they'll even listen to it, made up of about twelve different people, will be really important as, as, as listening to us. But I don't know, it depends on how they're gonna make the decision, and we all know it's gonna be a political decision, so.
So did, did any of those up there, the rest of the crew, did they talk, you know, like the city had passed, and I'd sent around to you guys this resolution, whether or not that's worth, worth it for us to pass as a county, the one that's calling for the governor general assembly to protect necessary funding for county government?
And we, we, the effort to even vote.
But I, I don't know.
I, I don't see an issue in, in not passing.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's this thing I sent around a few weeks ago, just to say, you know, if, you know, like, at least we're concerned about this from a county standpoint, and we're on record as, I don't know.
I'm not sure I agree with that, Alan, I'm not sure that I agree that, that we should, they, and I'm not saying that, I just throw out a figure, if they're gonna cut us four hundred thousand, if that's gonna get the state back on a fiscal footing, then we may have to deal with it. Nobody wants to get cut, you know? Two weeks ago, didn't we get a memo from some gal that was, said, you know, we get some grant program that we used once, and they're getting ready to cut, do away with us, you need to call your senator. Everybody's doing that right now, because everybody's head's on the block, and, and Judge is a good example, I mean, they're, they're starting to feel.
I guess, I guess my point is a little bit more from Jeff's standpoint, they're threatening me with death. No, I still want both my arms, and I'm ready to tell them, I want both my arms. This idea of like, as a general assembly can go out and say, we're gonna do this, this, and this, and the governor, we're gonna do this, this, and this. Oh, and you guys, we're gonna give you more power and more authority. But if, if actually the income tax is supposed to come back to that local government, then why don't they take it out of their state government expenditures and not out of local government? That, that's why I bring up that issue, because it's all politics, so we're all politicians.
Exactly, but it's got something, I think we all agree that it has to stop. What, what we've been doing in the past is, we're so far in debt, and we've gotta get out of debt, and we've gotta do something to get on the right path, we gotta be like Indiana.
Well, you're both right, but it has to be in a way that makes sense. By passing a resolution isn't gonna make it so. But at least it draws a line that says, we're not gonna just lay over and say, okay, take the four hundred thousand dollars from us, and there's no accountability, where's the shared pain?
What do they do with that quarter thousand? You know, it's like whenever they passed the state income tax, all well and good. And in reality, that they said, one time they said, well, we actually have a quote-unquote balanced budget, well, baloney. They were still so far in debt, it'd be different if they'd taken that state income tax and paid down that debt.
Instead of spending it.
Instead of spending, I mean, like right here, if they're gonna take our four hundred thousand, where exactly is that gonna go to? And I don't think I have the answer for that.
The other thing is, I brought up the point.
That's my concern.
I brought up the point that, that out here at the highway department, they keep taking more and more of our MFT money. And it's not going to infrastructure for the state of Illinois. It's going to make the Department of Transportation and Social Management balance their budget there. That's not an answer, they're already taking money from us. And we're not, and the other thing I brought up is, we've got commissions all over the state of Illinois that have got seven, eight members that are being paid a hundred thousand dollars a year, that basically are political appointments. You wanna start cutting your funds and saving millions, get rid of a lot of these, you know, whether the, the, there's one at the U of I that's six or seven people, and they're each paid a hundred and fourteen thousand bucks, and they're to advise them on environmental issues. How they got a Department of Environmental over there?
Somebody's gotta advise them, they can't, they don't, they don't wanna do that work.
There's just a lot of areas, and I, this one, I think it'd be helpful to go on record, which doesn't commit us ultimately to not negotiating and not believing that the state of Illinois should be doing what we did several years ago. We've been cutting ever since we've been on the board trying to make things work. And, you know, if the state of Illinois had started three years ago, or four years ago, what we started, maybe things wouldn't be so bad. But anyway, so.
Good discussion.
It was a bunch of politicians together talking about, you know, and I sat with the Champagne County chairperson, and she was, you know, more concerned about the U of I, and, you know, and it's, and I can understand that. But she also thought that the change in, that the governor was proposing was cutting the sales tax in half. Oh, no, Mr. Boyd, you have this wrong. And then they stood up there and said, no, it's just the income tax. Everybody is not on the same page. We need to all get on the same page and have decent information so that we can make some, some decisions, and I hope we're included in it. Absolutely. And I hope is a big word, don't expect maybe, but at any rate. Finance-wise, it hasn't changed a whole lot, we've got some more income in since the last time. But we're still sitting at about twenty percent income versus twenty-six point three percent expenditures after thirty-three percent of the year, okay?
Have you got a whole lot, I think y'all got the thing about that class in.
Denver.
In Denver.
Oh, that's what this is?
Yeah. I don't know if you guys in your close station, between now and the next week or something, wanna figure out who all wants to go, needs to go, ought to go?
Can go.
That can't be a close session.
It doesn't need to be, that's no big deal, figure that out.
So we're, we're signed up to go, is this?
No, we're not signed up yet because I haven't.
We got, you guys, when you sign up, you guys tell who's coming and all that?
Yeah, I think we've gotta have all the, I mean, I've gotta log in the computer and get on all this.
Okay. All right.
And the dates are, what, May thirty?
It's gotta, I've got, we've gotta be signed up by.
Ten, nine.
May the fifth, I believe.
I think it says here start, I don't, this is start, May, August.
May twenty-second. The class will be eight twenty-four to eight twenty-seven.
We will, everybody can take a look at this, and we can talk and decide who wants to go or who can go.
You need to start taking this stuff more seriously.
And then you get the information, and you get the.
I think I can do everything online.
Okay.
Augie?
Becky Clark's mother passed away last week, and you all went ahead and bought her a nice display of flowers. So there's a thank you note, so you can send that around.
I'm glad to hear you.
You're gonna owe me in round numbers, eight dollars, seven, eight dollars, but if you wait till I get the bill.
Just bill me.
No, I'll tell you exact. Also have, I believe I sent in the email to all of you, the UCCI Legislative and Education Seminar. Did you get that in your mail?
Maybe a page or two of that, I think you.
That's gonna be tomorrow.
Which is tomorrow.
And I'll probably be going there.
So that's that, you, you good at that, I need to go on, everybody's got, okay. Got that, I'll pass this around, that's just a soil and water conservation district minutes, it's just, there's one there. Anybody wanna, wants to read that, you can read that. While we're talking UCCI, they did, they promised to make a partial refund of our annual membership dues. Well, they did that, seventy-five dollars. I don't know, we got fifteen or sixteen percent back, so I'll get that to the treasurer. Questions on that?
Yeah, why?
Well, just because they, they are in a position to do that.
Oh, okay.
And recognize that we value your membership, and we can do it, so here's part of your money back, that's all. Fifteen, sixteen dollars.
And which group was that?
UCCI.
Yeah, and, and the reality of that is, we've never paid any until this last year.
Till this last time.
So they gave us fifteen bucks for basically that.
And I got a meal.
Yeah. That's what I was very good about.
Just got in the third farm lease, so I need a signature, and I gotta check here, so I just kept it all together.
Very good.
And. Election coming up, we've been somewhat, it's been slower, a lot slower. Tomorrow's department head meeting. Ten o'clock, as was mentioned, questions for me? I do have a new employee starting today, Callie Evelyn. Becky is retiring at the end of May. So we're in training.
Who's training her?
Becky.
She looks just like her dad.
Yeah.
I didn't mean anything by that.
Yeah, you don't have to worry, I'm not training her.
At least you know how to do it, don't you?
Well. Thirty-plus years and a month or two time of training, not near enough, but we'll, we'll make it. I think those are the highlights. Oh, you see on your note, I sent that out, that Jill should be here, I don't know if she's out there, she's out there. I'll let her explain, she wants to take a picture for county ID badges, if you don't already have yours.
That's what we need, is so they can identify us.
What is it, a big red?
Hi, Jill.
Hey, I didn't wanna walk in on it, but I was trying to. Basically, all county employees have ID badges, Ben, I don't see him here.
No.
Ben's not here, but he's the only one that's actually came out and got him, I think some of you guys have been new, switched around and stuff. So I just offered to come out here and get everyone's picture and signature, so I can go print your badges and bring them to you.
In the event of a, an emergency.
In an emergency, any security, anything like that.
Then you can.
Discount on motels.
Yes, you do.
Stuff like that.
Yeah, right, yep, seriously. You do, you do.
Yeah, it really does, it'll back it down from a hundred and twenty to sixty.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
So, I'm thinking after you, after Carl adjurses the meeting, then we can get those pictures taken.
All right, works for me.
Anything else, Augie?
No, sir, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Vice Chairman, did you have anything you wanted to say today, you didn't ask yourself, so.
Right, that's all, and our picture's taken before Bruner, because it'll probably break.
I thought it's like picture day, it's cool, so everyone says.
Sitting grids.
They just have those with a man, no pictures, can you do that? Thank you, Brent.
Is there a need to go to close station for anything, by having a reason?
Yeah. Yeah, but, yes.
Can we, can we postpone this, get pictures taken, come back to this?
It'll take me literally like a few minutes.
Yeah.
How long will it take?
Two minutes. But I tell you what, no, let's just not, I'm gonna talk, I know, I'm gonna talk to Jeff, and then if we do, we'll do it.
Okay.
It's nothing, you guys, it's not earth-shattering.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, so moved.
Second.
All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same time, being adjourned.
No.
Hey, Jill.
Convict, sucking up convict.